Good evening. I now call the Winton Woods Board of Education regular meeting to order. It is 6:30 PM on Monday, November 23rd, 2015. I would like to ask that you please turn all your electronic devices to silent and please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Verdi?
Yes.
Mrs. Burns?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Penney-Cutt?
Here.
Mrs. Miranda?
Present. Our first item on the agenda this evening is our district honors, recognations... recognition, sorry. That was a hybrid of two words. Gifts and introductions. Mr. Superintendent, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. I'd like to have Mr. Terry Lee come up. Mr. Lee is representing the Kiwanis Club and these awards are sponsored by the Kiwanis Group every month.
You want to say anything? I'm glad to be here tonight on behalf of the Kiwanis Club to hand out these awards and it's great to be here.
Okay, thank you. The first name. You ready? Sure.
I'm anxious to see what you do to this name. We're all ears, Mr. Superintendent.
Olaseenem Osani. Is he here? All right. I've been working on that name like, for like, hours, okay. We'll come back to him. He may not be here, but we will also read a little bit about him. He has a nickname, Olase. And the teacher describes him as an incredible young man. He's a perfect example of a student who lives his days in kindness, generosity, friendship, and fairness. Every time he comes to class, he offers to help with any and every task. Oftentimes in class, we work independently or in small groups on assignments. Once some students are finished, they're able to help students who may be struggling. Olase is always willing to help when asked or will ask me if he can help his classmates who are still working before he's even been asked. He is enthusiastic about learning and is a pleasure to teach. I love watching him learn more and more every day. Olase always has a smile on his face. He's very polite and you should ask him to dance sometime. He really gets our composer of the month music. I also like to say that his kind spirit, generous heart, playfulness, and hard-working mindset make for a special young man and student. There's no question that Olase deserves the Kiwanis Award. He's not here right now, but if he walks in, I'll read it all over again. All right. The next person, much easier to pronounce, Brianna Ball. Why don't you just stand right there and let him look at you? Brianna Ball is a ninth grader at Winton Woods. In her short time, she has already become a leader among her peers. Brianna is a wonderful student who has maintained a 4.0... wow. That's amazing for a ninth grader. If you guys know ninth graders, that's amazing. This accomplishment becomes all the more impressive considering she is a two-sport athlete. As a freshman, Brianna was on the varsity volleyball team and now she's on the varsity basketball team. Both of these sports have demanding practice and game schedules, but she is still able to achieve high levels of academic success. She has served as many, as a group leader in many of the, our class projects. Brianna is also a student who takes time to help others. This summer, she completed many hours of community service by helping to clean up the city through trash pickups. Brianna collected canned goods for the homeless as well. In school, she serves as a tutor to her classmates and teammates. Brianna continues to display that her good nature is as impressive as her good grades and good looks. Brianna Ball deserves this award because she is a model student both academically and socially. She embodies the warrior way and serves as an example to all of her peers. Thank you for the consideration and ladies and gentlemen, Brianna Ball.
This award is presented on behalf of the Green Hills Forest Park Kiwanis Club. It states, "The Winton Woods City School District Board of Education, the Green Hills Forest Park Kiwanis present this certificate to Brianna Ball in special recognition of your selection as Gold Star Kiwanis Student of the Month. November, Winton Woods High School, for your outstanding academic achievement, enthusiasm, and commitment to service in the community and your school district. And along with this certificate is a Gold Star monetary gift."
Come on. All the way up here. You have to stand up here so they can see. Stand up. All right. All right, very good. Can I read a little bit about you? Are you sure? Olase is an incredible young man. He is the perfect example of a student who lives his days in kindness, generosity, friendship, and fairness. Every time he comes to class, he offers to help with any and every task. Oftentimes in class, we work independently or in small groups on assignments. Once some students are finished, they're able to help students who may be struggling. Olase is always willing to help when asked or will ask me if he can help classmates who are still working even before he's been asked. He is enthusiastic about learning and is a pleasure to teach and I love watching him learn more and more every day. Olase always has a smile on his face. He's always polite. You should ask him to dance. He really gets into our composer of the month music, music month. I feel lucky to have Olasele at Winton Woods Elementary School and I know I'm only one of many. His kind spirit, generous heart, playfulness, and hard-working mindset make for a special young man and student. There is no question in my mind that Olase deserves the Kiwanis Award and that's his teacher, Ms. Megan Weaver. Who did you bring with you?
Mom.
All right, Mom, come on up for a picture.
Again, on behalf of the Kiwanis Club, I would like to present this award to this fine, outstanding gentleman here in special recognition of his outstanding character trait of fairness. Taking turns and sharing, not taking advantage of others, being open-minded and listening to another opinion, playing by the rules. Within the character of an individual lies the welfare of the nation. It is a character that enables the individual to survive, to endure, and to transcend the negative. Your values reflect your commitment to be a student of good character to your peers, your teachers, your parents, and your community. And as with the previous gift, there is a monetary gift courtesy of Barnes and Nobles. Enjoy us.
Ready for the next award? All right, the next award winner, recipient is Leila Adams. All right. Leila Adams is the Skyline Student Athlete of the Month. Leila was named Winton Woods City Schools' Skyline Student Athlete of the Month for November. She simultaneously ran on the high school's varsity cross-country team while also playing varsity soccer at the school. She maintains a 3.636 GPA and is ranked 27th out of 270 in her class. To be nominated for the Skyline Student Athlete of the Month, students must, number one, maintain an academic standard of three points or higher on the GPA scale, show respect for coaches, teammates, officials, teachers, other students, and family, show enthusiasm and a positive attitude, display commitment to practice, games, and personal skill development, demonstrate honesty in playing by the rules, and having high moral character. Leila defines what it means to be a true champion, said Athletic Director David Lumpkin. Playing two varsity sports simultaneously while maintaining high academic standards in the classroom makes her a true champion and a warrior. The Skyline Student of the Month Award is sponsored by the Forest Park Skyline, a business partner of Winton Woods City Schools. Student athletes honor receive a $20 Skyline gift card. Ready? Our next award recipient is, there's a special recognition and Silas? Can you come up? Silas had a featured story in a newspaper. So I'm going to read the entire story. You know why? Because it's that important. Ready? If I say anything that's not true, stop me. Okay, all right. There are many reasons Silas Barr runs. Growing up, Barr received, shared a love for running with his dad, but now in high school, the Winton Woods cross-country junior runs mostly because he can. Because for the last two years, his body wouldn't allow him to run, nor did it allow him to of these other passions, singing and performing in the Warriors Varsity Ensemble. Freshman year, Barr said he was sidelined by Osgood's Slatter Disease, inflammation of the knees last year. His health problems compounded. "I kept losing weight and losing weight," Silas said. "I got down to like 98 pounds. I went to the doctor and my resting heart rate was 140." Barr said he was tested at Children's Hospital where he was diagnosed with Graves' disease, which leads to hyperthyroidism. According to the Mayo Clinic, Graves' disease is an immune system disorder that results in overproduction of thyroid hormones. "The disease affected Barr in a variety of ways. My whole body would shake and I would have panic attacks," he said. "Everything I did was hyper. If I was sweating, I would really sweat. If I was hot, I would get really hot. I would end up breaking out in hives, I was so hot." This past summer, Barr said he received a radioactive iodine treatment. "That gave me the pills that were radioactive." Barr affectionately known by his teammate's coach as the hipster, smiled and said, "I thought it was pretty cool." You know, when I was in high school, they called me the hipster. You know that? I won't tell you why, but it's a whole nother story. Barr said the radiation meant he couldn't be around people for a week and it also stopped the function of his thyroid. "Now I don't produce thyroid hormones, so I take medicine every day for that." Silas said adding the medication is a lifelong treatment. Although he still battles occasional panic attacks, Barr is back to feeling like the Silas of old, playing ukulele at meets. In addition to other instruments, he plays piano, guitar, mandolin, and trumpet. "My dad is a big runner," Barr said. "That's why I started running, it's because of my dad. To start running again just shows that I'm back to who I really am. With choir, it makes me feel good, like I'm back to my old self." Running means a lot to Silas. Back on track with his team this fall, Barr has improved his time each time he's run, said Coach Josh Amstead. Fighting through uncertainty and illness have made Barr stronger and in turn, he has strengthened those around him. "He really matured into a nice young man who's definitely respected by his teammates, coaches, and teachers," said Amstead. "He gives me the strength. He gives me such hope, not just for him as an athlete, but for anyone who thinks they can't do it and everything's against him. To see him grow as a person and an athlete is a really emotional thing for me. I'm probably going to shed a few tears when he graduates. He is the epitome of an athlete for me." Wow. Hipster, you want to say a few words? Are you sure?
I'm good.
Okay. Moving right along. Now we get to the other part. Skyline Teacher of the Month, Ms. Anna Wilson. Ms. Wilson is a reading and language arts teacher at Winton Woods Middle School. She's a district Skyline Teacher of the Month for November. Principal Doug Sankar has observed Wilson in her classroom and worked with her as she coordinated some of the school's major events. He's always walked away impressed. "Ms. Wilson is a deserving recipient of this award," he said. "She's taken on leadership roles in the school and was instrumental in planning our fall overnighter. Her students have a sense of anticipation and an excitement about what learning activity they will do next. Her classroom activities are always targeted, engaging, and sometimes surprising." Sankar said, "Wilson's students discuss and write about big topics like bullying, being a peacemaker, and how to engage in the world. Her reading selections are relevant to students' lives," he said. "Her students employ Socratic seminar and they take ownership of their learning. Ms. Wilson has embraced our International Studies Schools Network Initiative, better known as ISSN, and she and her colleagues are planning a study of generosity and a role as agents of change. This will be done through the lens of the novel, A Christmas Carol. Finally, the unit will culminate in a fundraiser to purchase a water purification system for a village in Africa." To be nominated for the Skyline Teacher of the Month, teachers must demonstrate excellence in the classroom, motivation by encouraging and motivating students to surpass their expectations through academics and socialization, leadership, creativity and imagination, dedication, communication. Ms. Wilson also leads our Sunshine Effort to encourage staff and students alike, said Sankar. "She is always punctual, positive, and upbeat." Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Is that that creativity you're talking about, Principal Sankar? All right, very good. Thank you very much. All right. Special recognition, Mr. Chris Pierce.
Yeah, I brought my own.
That's the kind of man we want around. He brings his own awards. The Board of Education congratulates Mr. Pierce on receiving one of the 2015 Penguin Random House Foundation Teacher Awards for Literacy and a Grant for $2,500 to build the program in his classroom. The award also includes a sizable donation of books from the publisher. Mr. Pierce was honored at the convention of the National Council of Teachers of English that took place on November 19th to the 20th in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Oh, and I just wanted to say thank you for my parents because they came today. You're never too old to have your parents come.
Let's get your parents up here for a picture.
Oh.
Yes.
Come on up.
Yes. I know you guys have plenty of pictures of him, but...
This is a special one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. That's what you call sacrifice. I love it. Can I bring her back for a longer speech? Yes. I really should have Ms. Jordan present this award to Mr. Richardson because we were at an event and Mr. Richardson hadn't received notification that he had received the award. And Ms. Jordan mentioned to him, mentions to him like, "Hey, how did you feel about that award?" But he didn't know he had received the award. So she kind of just played it off and he says, "What award are you talking about?" She said, "Oh, I don't know." So Warm 98 and WLWT Teacher of the Week, Winton Woods Middle School, Mr. Dwight Richardson, Special Education Assistant. Congratulations to Mr. Richardson, who was surprised with the news on November 5th that he was selected as the Warm 98 WLWT Teacher of the Week. Mr. Richardson received a gift from Modern Office Methods, a $50 gift certificate to Tri County Mall, tickets to see the Pops, and a class pizza party from West Store Pizza.
Well, first of all, it's just an honor to be a part of Winton Woods School District. Been, it's been an absolute pleasure to be, to be a part of that and presently being at the middle school, Mr. Sankar and Ms. Wilson and, you know, just an honor and a privilege to work alongside of you all. And I just look forward for the rest of the school year, you know, to continue to encourage our students and to motivate them and to energize them to be the best that they can be. So thank you all so very much. And my family is Winton Woods School District. And currently, my immediate family is the middle school, so we just want to thank everyone
Is Ms. Owlsley here? Yes. Ms. Cleary, are you ready?
I'm ready. My hand in the camera?
Mr. Denny, you're the cameraman.
Oh, he can be. He's, he's the video man.
Dr. Holden.
Ah, Mr. Cleary.
Mr. Cleary.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Cleary. I'm part of Mr. Smith's communications team and I asked him if I could have the privilege of presenting this award tonight to my colleague, Cara Owlsley, who's a photojournalist with the Cincinnati Inquirer. Over the years, she's earned the respect of this district with her hard work and our admiration with her positive attitude. So we're happy to have a chance to brag about her and all she's done. Cara is a parent in our district. She has been for a number of years now. She is a mentor for the Academy of Global Studies, three years now. This is her third year. And we're really grateful because Cara keeps us in the newspaper in positive ways. She's photographed our kids on the first day of school, as we've refurbished our baseball field. She's been to our plays and musicals at the high school and the middle school. She's photographed our sports teams, graduation, and a lot of times, her pictures of our kids are on the front page, like this really nice one of a couple cheerleaders that she did. So the district is presenting Cara with the Ohio School Boards Association Media Award because of her accurate and balanced approach to sharing with the community both the challenges facing our schools and the successes achieved by our staff and students. Now, they say a picture is worth a thousand words, so I want to take a few minutes to let Cara's work speak for itself. Here are a few of her photos that show the special ways that she has highlighted our Oh, but this is much better.
Taking a picture for evidence is what's happening here.
Send a picture of the ocean. Yes.
One good time.
Treasure.
Stay up there.
Careful.
Thank you, Randy.
Did you see the second slide of the little boy in tears? It was me. The first day of school. Thank you very, very much. Who did you bring with you?
Oh, it's my daughter.
Oh, it's my daughter.
Okay, she has to come and get a picture with her mom. You can say a lot of things.
No, I just, I wanted to say thank you. I was not expecting to see my pictures up there. They just really touched my heart. But I also wanted to say thank you to the district because my daughter is doing awesome in school. I just want to brag about her. She's in the AGS program. She played volleyball. This past year, she got an award for that because she had a 3.5 GPA higher while she was playing volleyball. She's in the band, marching band, symphonic band. What else? Color guard. Color guard. She was in a musical last year. She's very, very active. And Winton Woods is helping her to be the person that she is now. And she's just doing really well here and I'm very grateful to the staff and the faculty and the school board. Thank you very much.
Representative from Forest Chapel United Methodist Church. Are they here tonight?
She's not here.
Okay. I'll still read about it. To the delight of the district, the partnership between Winton Woods City Schools and Forest Chapel United Methodist Church has continued from 2007 until the present day. Members of the congregation have volunteered their time and talents and many of our schools through tutoring and mentoring initiatives. If you stop by Winton Woods Primary North during the week, you'll find many church members seated outside the library working on academics with our younger students. At Winton Woods Intermediate School, Forest Chapel has volunteered for years at the annual Daddy Daughter Dance. This past summer, the church helped to sponsor a new educational opportunity for our students, fly fishing. Students in grades five to eight were able to learn the fundamentals of fly fishing during a free two-day camp held at Parky's Farm in Winton Woods. We're so grateful for the many years that Forest Chapel has held its summer back-to-school celebration, which has offered food and games to those attending, while providing school supplies to Winton Woods students. The church has also opened its doors to host our high school's Senior Reflection Ceremony. Winton Woods City Schools is happy to present Pastor Kabamba Kaboko.
Very good.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations Congregation of Forest Chapel United Methodist Church with the November Community Spirit Award. Thank you for your service to our students. I know some people may think, "That's all they do is give out awards." I wish. All right, our final recipient. The Community Spirit Award. It's more than the community spirit for this gentleman. It's more that he has put his life and energy and commitment into making the district a better place for all of our students. I remember meeting him at an interview and he asked me some of the most ridiculous questions that you could ever ask a person working to become the superintendent. His energy, his enthusiasm, his love for children and the love for district is just a small token of who he really is. I'd like to bring up Mr. Tim Cleary. I'm going to read a little about Mr. Cleary. He will not have the option of not speaking. Tim Cleary has been a member of the Winton Woods Board of Education since 2004. Mr. Cleary is president and CEO of TMI Electrical Contractors. He attended the University of Cincinnati and received his MBA from Northern Kentucky University. Tim and his wife, Teresa, were residents of Springfield Township and have two sons and a daughter who graduated from Winton Woods High School. Not only has his dedication to children been demonstrated by his tenure as board member, vice president, and president, but he has been an active supporter of Winton Woods City Schools in many other capacities over the years. Mr. Cleary has sponsored the Winton Woods Golf Outing, an event to raise money for equipment bags and media equipment for the high school football team. He also, along with his wife Teresa, has sponsored the Superintendent Scholars Award. Additionally, Mr. Cleary has donated three digital signage monitors for use in the schools. In 2012, the Clearys were awarded the Extra Mile Parents Award by the Board for their above and beyond involvement as parents. The Board of Education expresses its deep appreciation for Mr. Cleary for his exemplary support and service to the Winton Woods City Schools. Mr. Tim Cleary.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and the Board of Education. Since I knew that I was gonna, you were going to do this this evening, I spent the weekend thinking about what I was going to say, but I waited until the very last minute when I came here and actually put it down on paper because there was so much that I wanted to say. The first thing I want to do is I want to thank my wife and my children over the time period of being a board member. There's been a lot of time when I haven't been home. So I kind of listed some of those out because I'm a data guy, so I'm about numbers. I've attended over 390 board meetings, roughly 1,200 hours, 132 days of professional development. That's away from my wife. Mr. Smith, since he's been here, he's had seven books that he's asked me to read in his three years, plus magazines and multiple, multiple other things that need to be read and researched. I visited 168 different school districts in Ohio. One morning, my wife asked me very early, about 4:30, I got up and she said, "Why are you up so early?" I said, "Well, this is the first day of school." I always wanted to be at the high school before the first teacher arrived to say, "Welcome back. I'm so glad you're back. This is going to be a great and successful year." Those are the kind of things that I'm going to miss. I'm going to miss that. Where do I, where do I get my award? It's a student like this or a student like this. It's having the success of a teacher. That's the legacy that we as board members leave to the community. When I became a board member, I took an oath. It wasn't quite like this, but this is the oath I always remember. "I promise to do my best, to do my duty to God and country, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically fit and morally straight." That's what I committed to roughly 12 years ago. That's not what the oath is. That's the Boy Scout oath. But it, but it still, it still applies. It still applies. That was my measure of success. I have really enjoyed having relationships with students. I've loved, I have really enjoyed the ability to give out scholarships to some of our students, to give full ride scholarships to some of our students. We actually have a teacher that's back here in the district that is here because of those scholarships. And so it's really exciting to see that they actually came back. Interacting with students, I can think of just a couple very quick, short stories of students that I've been able to interact with. A young lady from Green Hills who said, right before graduation, "Mr. Cleary, I am so glad I'm graduating." And I said, "You know, I'm really glad you are too. What are you thinking about next year?" And she said, "Well, you know, I'm not really thinking about college. I'm just so glad that I'll be able to leave home and be on my own. I've been in an abusive relationship in my home and I feel like now is, now is time that I can escape." I've been, I've been sleeping in random cars in Green Hills because I can't stay at home at night because that's when the abuse occurs. Being able to find her the right help, is that something that all board members do? No. But I felt good in that there was a student that I could put, I could have an impact on and help her become a successful adult. I've enjoyed mentoring many, many, many students. Still doing that. Two weekends ago, I had the junior high wrestling team and the high school wrestling team out to my home. And we worked together. That was as much about mentoring as it was about work, building a relationship with students. I've had many of Winton Woods students come and shadow me at my office, students that wanted to become businessmen or go into business or were interested in engineering. I've enjoyed those things. I've enjoyed all the fingerprints that I'm leaving behind in policy, in facility, in the stadium. Those were all things that occurred while I was here. I'd be amiss if I didn't say something about this wonderful staff that we have here at Winton Woods. With a fantastic superintendent. It was a lot of work to get Mr. Smith here. It was well worth the work. And I'm really glad that you're here, Mr. Smith. You've brought great value, not only to the parents of the districts, to the district, but to the community as well. And Mr. Seymour, I have kind of the same thing to say about you. Mr. Penneykuff and I are so glad that we were able to steal you away from another school district to come here. You do an exemplary job with our district's finances. And I thank you for that. Dr. Holden. In here somewhere. It's been very enjoyable working with you and I'm really glad that you moved from principal to administrator because you're an excellent administrator in the role you're in. So I hope there's many, many, many more years to come you, with your involvement with Winton Woods. Mr. Denny, the same thing. I've had a chance to see you kind of grow up in the district. That's been really exciting. I think you really hit your groove. It's been a pleasure working alongside you. Courtney Wilson, it's been fun working with you, whatever that looked like in many, many, many different occasions. Kristi Hooper, I could go on and on. Don O'Connor at the administrative side. At the teaching, or I'm sorry, at the support side. Jeanette Jordan, you were the glue a lot of times that helped the Board of Education get the things accomplished that they needed to get accomplished. And I thank you for that. You added to the success, at least while I was here. LeAnn Montgomery and Bobby Coogly and Sandy and Gary Sweetman and Wayne, Rhonda Hobbs. These are all excellent, excellent administrators in our district that work hard, that care about our students, that have the student in the back of their mind. Those people really understand the value of ensuring that all students achieve at their highest potential. Teachers, Mr. Sancker, I've known for a long time. Mr. Jones, excellent, excellent principals and buildings. It's been a pleasure working alongside of you and seeing your results change both directions. And lastly, I would like to thank the Board of Education for your appointment when Mrs. Emmer died to the Great Oaks Board of Education. While I'm no longer an official board member here, I still serve as the sixth board member just at Great Oaks. And I want to say thank you for that. I really have enjoyed doing that. I've enjoyed seeing Mr. Smith and Dr. Holden and somebody else was out this past week. I think Winton Woods now holds the record for visits to the Great Oaks program over all other school districts. But with that, thank you. And thank you, community. You're the ones that elected me and put me in this position. And it has been an honor to serve, to serve my constituency and my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary, for your years of service on our board. And congratulations again to our students, our teachers, community. Thank you. We will now take a five-minute recess.
All right, we're back in session.
They wanted to see an accident happen.
We have no public comments. So we will move right on to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of minutes as attached. Board, unless you see any necessary changes to these minutes, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penneykuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Our next item on the agenda is our treasurer's report. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Well, for the month of October, our year-to-date revenues were at 18.7 million. And with a month-to-date of 3.8, mostly that was about 900,000 in state foundation and the rest was our homestead and rollback team in the state. Our expenditures year-to-date for the general fund are around 15.6 million. And we are currently running right on budget. This time last year, as you know, we were running a little under budget. But I guess what that means is that all the requests for the budget are being spent and we're on target. So... The, the last page represents all the financial activity for the month of October. And all funds had a unencumbered balance of 16.7 million, of which 16.3 million was the general fund. Basically, from, one thing that's changed is all of our state and federal grants. They've changed their project cash request system. And we very rarely will have any idle funds in any of our state or federal grants. You may see from time to time at the end of the month a small negative amount because we had underestimated the purchase orders or the amount that would be spent by the end of the month. But they've really cracked down on requesting funds that are not needed within five days of request. So it's a guesstimate time on our part. So basically, most of our operating funds for investments will be mostly general fund from now on. And that's it for the treasurer's report.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, any questions for Mr. Seymour? With no objections being heard, let the financial report for the month of October 2015 be submitted to audit. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor for your recommendations.
For our investment report, we had approximately 21 million invested and we earned $12,270 on those funds for the month of October.
Or the motion would be in order.
Madam President, I move that we accept that the October investment report is presented.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penneykuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. 7.02.
Basically, what I'm asking for is, from the board, is permission to submit a modified tax budget to the Hamilton County Auditor and Budget Commission because there is a state-prescribed format that we're to follow, which is six-month incremental budgeting. And what we're asking permission, what I'm asking permission from the board to do is to do away with that and send them our five-year forecast in lieu of that budget, which is really not understandable by anybody but the tax commission. And they will, in lieu of the prescribed form, accept our five-year forecast, given your permission to do so. And they request a resolution noting that I've gotten your permission and I will forward it to them.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour.
Madam President, I move to approve the resolution that the treasurer has just presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions for Mr. Seymour?
Good to get some mileage out of the five-year forecast that the state requires us to do.
Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penneykuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Our next item on the agenda are the reports from the superintendent. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Madam President and Board, there are eight reports. But I'd like for you to look at the one from Principal Wallace at Primary North... I mean, Primary South, excuse me. There's a holiday shop fundraiser sponsored by Winton Woods Parent Teachers Association. And when we're using, we're talking about some of these opportunities. It would be really nice if the board could come to some. I think the kids would really appreciate it knowing that the board is taking time out of their busy schedule to come and be part of these activities. A really nice event that's going to take place with the North Notes rehearsal, Room 28, 8 o'clock to 8:45. And I know you guys are well aware that Mr. Day was featured in a fantastic, fantastic article with NBC. I'm hearing that Mr. Denny's going to be with North Notes very soon. So thank you very much, Mr. Denny. Student of the Month for ES. That would be a very, a really nice event to be part of. And that's at 11:15 a.m. on December 4th. And then there's another special event at IS, Math Counts. And it's an evening event, 3:10 to 4:30 on November 30th. And I'm not sure of how many of you are aware that there's a curling club. And the curling club is something different and exciting. Mr. Day is very innovative and his whole objective is to give kids opportunities that they... they wouldn't ordinarily have. So the curling club is another activity. And there's a holiday store at MS, and finally, there are several activities taking place at the high school. There is an AGS online application. There is a winter band concert December second. There is an AGS open house December third, and then there's December ninth, the Choir and Orchestra Holiday Concert, and that's at seven PM sharp. So here are some of the different things that are happening. One of the things that I'd like the board to remember, we've added preschool. So very, very soon, you're going to see preschool reports coming in about some activities that are happening with our preschool. And finally, I'm not sure if you are aware that on November thirtieth, that's next Monday, the Harrison Brothers, Major League Baseball athletes, their mom is a, one of our employees, and so they're going to be speaking about staying the course and staying motivated at the alternative school, and that's at nine thirty to twelve thirty. It'd be really good if the board members would really come and show their support.
That will be in the library, what's called the library room at the community building?
That's where we have our regular staff meetings. Yes, sir. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you very much.
We'll move right into eight point oh two.
Yes, Madam President and Board, for your pleasure, these are all first reads, new and revised board policies, and I will read them just for their title.
Thank you.
Sixteen thirty point zero one, Administration, FMLA Leave. Twenty-two sixty point zero two, Single Gender Classes and Activities. Twenty-four sixty-one, Recording of District Meetings Involving Students and Our Parents. Thirty-four thirty point zero one, FMLA Leave for Professional Staff. Forty-four thirty point zero one, Classified Staff FMLA Leave. Seventy-five ten, Use of District Premises. Eighty-four twenty, Emergency Situations at Schools. Eighty-four fifty-two, Automated External Defibrillators. And eighty-five hundred, Food Service. These are all first reads for the board's pleasure.
Thank you. Eight point oh three?
Eight point zero three. The only second read that we have, Madam President and Board, is ninety-two eleven, Relations District Supporting Organizations.
We'll move right into your recommendations, starting with nine point oh one, Superintendent Smith.
The recommendations to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
Oh, you do, for eight point oh three? I apologize. A motion would be in order, Board, for eight point zero three, Policy ninety-two eleven.
Madam President, I move that we approve the revised Policy nine-two-one-one as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penney-Cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We will now move into nine point zero one.
Thank you, Madam President. The recommendations to approve personnel schedules, Schedule A, Resignations and Retirement, Schedule C, Support Staff, Schedule D, Extra Duty and Supplemental Employment, Schedule E, Leaves, Schedule L, Employee Death Notice, Schedule M, Termination of Classified Employee.
Madam President, I move the approval of the six personnel schedules just referred to by the superintendent.
Second. It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penney-Cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, nine point zero two?
Yes, Madam President. The recommendation from the superintendent's office is to approve the exempt salary schedule as presented. The schedule present, presented reflects no change in salary, however, there is a title change as being recommended from Executive Secretary to Administrative Secretary.
Forward, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the exempt salary schedule as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Smith, just one question. Can you give a little discussion as to why?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Ms. Burns. One of, one of the things that we realized, the, as we were going through the salary schedules, the Human Resources Director, Treasurer, and myself, we realized that the, it's very hard to be a Executive Secretary when the person is not the executive. So we had to change it to Administrative in order to meet the right guidelines and requirements. That was a catch on our part, and I appreciate Ms. Wilson bringing that to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penney-Cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, nine point zero three?
Yes, Madam President and Board, there is a proposal for overnight extended student trip Academy of Global Studies, eleventh grade, to Washington DC, Maryland, Pennsylvania, from February of the eleventh to the fifteenth, and the recommendations to approve the proposal for the overnight extended trip for students in the Academy of Global Studies to visit Washington DC, Maryland, Pennsylvania. And one of the things I would like to say about the trips, the people that are sponsoring, the adults that are making the recommendations and writing the proposals for the extended trips, have become very, very good at making it a very comprehensive report. I'm not saying that the others were not, but they have become very, very technical about putting all the variables in, including the ratios, the time of flight, the time of travel, all the arrangements, when the parent meetings are going to take place, and I have to say that not one parent has complained about how this is organized, and so that's kudos to everyone who prepares and plans for these trips. Thank you.
Forward, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I will move to approve the trip to the Washington and Gettysburg area as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I, I do have a question, only because maybe we're talking Washington DC, and unfortunately, there have been so many things in the news as of late. You know, we were talking, going to, you know, Louisville, Kentucky, I probably wouldn't even think about this, but, so are there any precautions or any additional precautions, I should say, in light of the location that will be taken, because that's kind of a high visibility, high-profile area, just like in a New York City, or there, some of the bigger, more visible places, because of all of the things that are in the news now with, with acts of, I'll say violence, I won't use the T-word, but...
Yes, ma'am. Well, one of the things that I hope the board understands is, these trips are planned months in advance, and so the proposals come in months in advance. One of the things that I would like to say, the President of the United States has made a declaration to the community and to the public that says, "We can't be afraid to still exercise our freedom and our rights to travel and to experience. Our children still deserve to have the experiences, and since we know that we're part of a project, problem-based institution, I think it gives them some real, real experiences about, this is the time, this is where we are in our country, and this is where our mission about our responsibility to be better citizens comes into play." I think the people that take the trip, the children on the trips, will take every precaution to make sure that safety is paramount. So thank you, Madam Vice President.
I would just like to give a shout-out to Cincinnati Financial. It says here that they're part of the source of the funds for allowing this trip, so thank you very much to that business and those folks there for supporting our students. Is there any further discussion or questions?
The rest of the cost of the trip will be made up from the students and fundraising activities?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penney-Cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, nine point zero four?
Yes, Madam President, I believe this is my final report, and these are all recommendations to approve the revised board policies, and the first one is fifty-six thirty point zero one, Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, and Limited Use of Restraint and Seclusion. Eighty-three twenty-five, Receiving Legal Documents. Eleven thirty, Conflict of Interest. Thirty-one thirteen, Professional Staff Conflict of Interest. Forty-one thirteen, Classified Staff Conflict of Interest. Sixty-one forty-four, Finances Investments. And finally, eighty-three thirty, Operations Student Records. Wait, I'm sorry. Eighty-four hundred, School Safety. Eighty-five fifty, Competitive Food Sales. And finally, eighty-six sixty, Incidental Transportation of Students by Private Vehicle.
Forward, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to approve the new and revised board policies as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penney-Cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will hear from Mr. Penney-Cuff regarding the legislative report. Mr. Penney-Cuff, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The topic for tonight has to do with the state report cards. As we have been informed several times, the results from the state tests that were given last spring, almost six months ago or so, those results, those report card data will not be available until January. However, today, the state of Ohio released some raw data. It was reported today in the Cleveland Plain Dealer, which means Cincinnati will report it in a week or so. It's usually considerably further behind. So why am I bringing it up? This is raw data. It's not accurate, although people might want to look for trends, look for good news in it, but these are, this is not the full report card. There will be no grades, no performance index, and no value-added assessments. There'll be no comparisons to previous years. However, the reason I am mentioning it is that if prior examples will hold, there will be some newspapers try to make a story, they'll claim scores up, scores down, whatever, on bad data, and if previous situations hold, there will be some school districts who will attempt to spin the story based upon flawed data. So the only thing that, the only reason the data is out, so that districts all around the state can start looking for errors, and what do I mean by errors? Students that are mobile, some students took the exam in our building, but for the state reporting, they will belong to some other district, the district that they just came from last week or last month, and some of our students that have been ours for some number of months or years, who transferred to some other district after a given date, their scores have to be surgically removed and put on the other district. So there is quite a bit of work yet to be done, so do not be distracted if you see in the inquiry stories about the state data says this, or the state data says that, or from school districts who are attempting to get ahead of the story and try to cushion the blow with their voters, or brag about it, but it's, it's half-baked data at this point. That would conclude my warning, my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Penney-Cuff. Next, we will hear from Mr. Cleary regarding the Great Oaks report. Mr. Cleary, you have the floor, and thank you for staying.
Thank you, Madam President and Board. The format that I've been, the last three months that I've put this in, I really have done it really just as an institutional copy that can become a matter of record as to what's occurring over at the Great Oaks. So I'll just kind of build on that every month. The Educa, our education foundation, which is made up of our board members, associates, and students gathered at our Scarlet Oaks campus last week, and we bagged twenty-three thousand snack packs, meals for our students. The foundation sponsored this event. It's a series of initiatives that will be undertaken to alleviate student barriers to learning. So those snack packs go home in the evenings and weekends, and we do reduced and free lunches during the day here in Wynton Woods, and we do the same thing at the Oaks, but what we found at the Oaks, that was no guarantee that there was a meal once they left the campus, so we were trying to fill the gap, and we did, and we were lucky enough to find funding to do this, so it was a great project. We've been recognizing our veterans. The Great Oaks Board of Directors began our November board meeting by recognizing those that served in our armed forces. The Scarlet Oaks Navy ROTC led the ceremony, and my last month's packet, I think I highlighted a couple of our students that are in the ROTC. This is kind of some interesting data. Intern placement reported, the Great Oaks associates continue to encourage all of our 2015 graduates to seek employment and continuing education. At this moment in time, ninety, roughly ninety-four percent of our graduates are employed or continuing their education. Forty-six percent are continuing post-secondary studies. This is a really hard project for the Great Oaks to do, because once your students leave, sometimes it's really hard to follow the data. Dr. Johnson, you know what I'm talking about, but we're working diligently to collect the social media information so we can stay in contact with them, because that's how we have to do it. So kind of interesting. Kind of another interesting fact, these are just some, some of our numbers, this is interesting data about our students on the Great Oaks Career Campus. Eighty-five percent of our students have passed state-recognized Industry Technical Skills Assessment. That's a pretty high percentage. That means that the minute they graduate, they're skilled in some trade, craft, technology, so they can become employed, if that's what they choose to do, or go on to secondary education. That might be like an electrician's license, or a plumber's license, or a Ramtech certification. Ninety-two percent of our students are currently working that have graduated. Forty-six percent of our students have gone on to post-secondary. Ninety-seven percent of our graduates earned dual credit while at the Great Oaks. We currently have a hundred and twenty-eight students enrolled at the Great Oaks, and ten of our students are grade twenty-three. Kind of found that, found that interesting. So that's kind of the gift that keeps on giving down the road in our numbers that we really don't always watch. If you've been listening to any radio, the Great Oaks is pushing their marketing campaign. We've been on the radio a lot. Madam President, I left you a copy of our new catalog, what we're working on, what we're sending out to families. We're working on some legislative things in Columbus when, and I may not have this right, it's either House, I think it's House Bill fifty-two, when House Bill fifty-two was passed and it changed how career tech and vocational schools appoint their board of directors, it created this terrible nightmare, and that is that a lot of the career centers, just like the Great Oaks, are made up of thirty-five members. So basically, we were put on notice that in six years, you have to change all your members. Institutionally, that's not good for an organization, they have to change that many members, so we're working on some legislatives there, so at least there'd be a phase in, if the maximum term you can serve is two, is two terms or a total of six years, because there's nobody that has willingly said, "Hey, I'll step off." Everybody has a passion for what they're doing there. Our Scarlet Oaks Culinary Students also found a way to build new relationships with food. This week, they served over three hundred meals to English speakers of other language, languages. We know that sharing a meal is one of the best ways to reach across divides. Our chefs and a couple of our students took part in that. I said something about the ROTC. Mr. Smith and Dr. Holden and someone else, I'm not sure who it was, but they came out to our Ramtech, we had a Ramtech open house. Ramtech is, stands for Robotics Advanced Manufacturing Technology Education Collaborative. We have one student in that program, and I asked that student, "How did you choose this program?" It was really interesting what he told me. He said, "I wanted to be with..." It was really interesting what he told me. He said, I wanted to be with other people that had the same passion for something I had. And he said, when I was, when I was here at Went Woods, there were too many people, and I couldn't align with somebody with the same passion. Kind of an interesting, an interesting statement that he made. Our Ramtech program was funded with fifteen, with fifteen million dollars in the Stride Aid Grant, and was given to nine different school districts. If you ever have an opportunity to go there and visit, it is amazing. It is really cutting edge. I asked our student another question, and somewhat I was a little embarrassed that he didn't know what I was communicating, because he said, could you ask that another way? But I said, do you feel like you're a pioneer in this field? What the Ramtech students are doing is they're, they're actually working physically on robots and programming robots. But I asked him that, do you kind of feel like a pioneer in this area? He didn't have a concept of what pioneer was. But after I explained it to him, he said, yeah, there are, we are being told by our institutional collaborative members, some of those like Alan Bradley and Fanuc and Partner, or Parker, that we'll find jobs instantly, because there are so few people out there that have certifications to work on this. And they don't necessarily want you, they have a college education. They want you to move right in. The technology is changing so quick that if you go to school for four years, whatever you learned in school is completely outdated. Kind of an interesting, an interesting statement when you listen to their business partners. I have a couple of students highlighted this month. Taisha Birch in health technology. She was one of the Great Oaks Spotlight Students of the Month. She's already working. She works in Mount Notre Dame Healthcare. She's already passed her state testing to work as a nursing assistant. So she's kind of out on her little co-op job. Respite Care of Cincinnati requested the assistance of Scarlet Oaks ROTC for escorts and color guard for their board meeting on September the eighth. The escorts, the escorts and presentation of the colors and the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance were successful, and it was really appreciated. Two of our students, Brandon, Brandon Holly, which is a welding student, and Galvin Ripley, he's a firefighting student, took place in that. As well as there's, on the fun side, some of our students went out to East Fork Lake on another ROTC program to learn about warranting. Those students were Megan Riley, law enforcement, that's a brother and sister, and Kaisha Atkins, surgical tech, in Texas Nigen, he's in law enforcement. It's so interesting to talk to students, because they all seem like they know what they're gonna do. Every chance that I've had, and I know Mr. Smith has been out there many times, we asked the question, what are you gonna do when you're done? In most cases, they want to go on to higher education. So that's kind of exciting to see. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary. Next item on the agenda is board motions. Mr. Penneka, I will let you have the floor for eleven point zero one.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Board, I call your attention to the motion that you have on this place in your, in your board docs. And rather than read it all, let me just make the motion, and then I'll explain a little bit. So I move to modify the superintendents in two places, as shown in that long write-up.
Second. It's been motioned and seconded?
If I could then, I'll explain.
Please go ahead.
This is with the, changing of the guard, the disappearing of Mrs. Burns and myself. There's some institutional memory that's about to leave that refers back to the superintendent's contract in terms of, well, we knew what we meant, but the language is just vague enough. So we're not proposing anything new, no, nothing changing in terms of compensation. Just clarifying two points. I don't even go so far as to call them typos. So it is to replace paragraph four A with a new paragraph four A. And it is to insert the appropriate school year into a version of four A that was adopted in August of two thousand and fourteen. So it just clarifies which school year that that particular paragraph pertained. And that's the end of the explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Penneka. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Mrs. Burns.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Penneka.
Aye.
Mrs. Moran.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now, oh, thank you, Mr. Penneka. We'll now move into comments from the members of the Board of Education. Madam Vice President, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I was recently notified, as in probably about forty-eight hours ago, that I will need to be on a business trip the week of December fourteenth, which is our next scheduled regular meeting, which makes this meeting my last official meeting in front of Waycross and the community. So in light of that, I wanted to take a few moments. I came flying in here, as you know, as I sometimes do. Told my president, you know, he was near me, hey, guess what? I just found out. So I wanted to take a minute to say some thank yous, because I would be remissified, exited stage left, which I have a tendency to do, and not say thank you. First, I wanted to thank the staff and the administration. You guys are absolutely fantastic. We have gone through, in the last four years that I've been here, we've gone through quite a bit of turmoil and a lot of changing of the guard with respect to the folks on the staff, and really the folks who are in front lines and making the things happen. And yet, there has been a level of grace, a level of acceptance, a level of willingness to do whatever was necessary to get the job done for the benefit of the children. And for that, I personally say thank you. I am a vested member of this community. So whether I sit at this podium, or whether I'm in Kroger's at the produce section, I still have an interest and a concern about what happens in this district. And so for that, I want to say thank you. I definitely want to say thank you to the gentlemen on either ends of this podium, Mr. Seymour and Mr. Smith. You have, and, and Mr. Cleary alluded to this, there have been many long nights, and many late meetings, but you have educated us in the way that I, I personally had not been educated before with respect to educational finances, best practices, the things that are needed, that needed to come into the district to make this district better. It's not something that happens overnight. And so I recognize that. I want others to recognize that as we make the turn that we, that we are making, that it's, it's, it's long, dog-eared nights and meetings, and, and lots and lots of discussion at the table. The nice, really nice mahogany table that's back there. But, but it's a lot of conversation. So what people tend to see at these meetings are the votes, but the votes have come after a lot of hours of conversation, and many meetings, making sure that we understand it clearly and succinctly, that we're looking at best practices, that we're doing what's best for the district and for the, for the students, not just for the short term, and not being reactive, but being very thoughtful and very deliberate about what we do for the long-term betterment of the district. And then finally, I wanted to thank my fellow, fellow board members. You know, you hear a lot when you're campaigning, or when you think you want to be up here, and then when you get here, you find that not everything you heard and you were told was entirely one-hundred percent true. And so I was pleasantly surprised, I'm just gonna put it that way, that it was not nearly as arduous as I thought it was going to be. It wasn't easy, but it wasn't painful. I appreciate the people that I have worked with in the last two years, four years, four years. I've learned a ton about the business of education. I appreciate your tenure and for sharing that. Mr. Penneka, you made a comment at one of our team developments, which I was kind of big on, sorry. But, but you said that we run as individuals, but we work, we have to work as a team. This is an entity. No one person gets anything done by themselves here. So if that's the thought in the community, that's a misnomer, that's an untruth. It doesn't happen in isolation or in a vacuum. But the people that are here have a willingness to work as a team. And even though we don't necessarily, aren't always in lockstep, and we don't have a groupthink, we can still come to consensus, we can still get things done, because we keep in mind what we've said about what we want for the, for the children of this district. So as I said, I won't be at the podium. I'll probably be over there picking collard greens or something for the holiday season at Kroger. You can find me there. But I say that to say I'm still very, very interested in the success of this district and the well-being of all of you individually and collectively. So thank you for having me for the last four years.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Birdy?
I had the pleasure of going to a, a meeting with a superintendent's breakfast at the alternative school last week, and sitting and listening to the kids talk about how they were doing, and watching Mr. Smith ask them questions and engage them. And, you know, it was, it was a great time to see the kids, you know, understand what the opportunities were for them. They had a former graduate of that program come back and tell about her experiences while she was there in, in the alternative school, as well as what she's doing now, and the success that she's having moving her education forward, and getting to where she wants to do. You know, she's gonna be able to do what she wants to do, and I think it was, it was a great experience. So thank you for inviting me.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. Dr. Johnson?
I just wanted to thank the people of the district, the school district that takes us, allows us to go to the OSBA conference. I mean, I don't know. I'm an educator, I've been an educator for thirty years, and that is probably one of the best conferences. And I don't know whether I just get so giddy about it. I just, I absolutely, I come back and I've learned so much. I got the books from the keynotes, two of the books from the keynotes. I wish I'd have got the third one in retrospect, but I was probably being cheap. But anyway, I've just gotten two of them, and I've read them, and absolutely inspired by Jane Pauli's book, absolutely inspired by the other gentleman's book, who was the astronaut. So I, I just want to thank the district for sending us to that. I always come back so inspired, and I just, you get an opportunity to speak to and talk to educators from as far north in Ohio as you can imagine, as far south and east and west. And sometimes you find out that, you know, even if we consider ourselves an urban district or not, some of the same problems in education exist. And collectively, when you talk to other educators, you can learn from their experiences. And I just really appreciate the opportunity to be able to attend that conference. And also just to, you know, as we come to a close, and it's not the end of the year, but, you know, even today in our board meeting, it was evident of all the people who sacrifice and volunteer their time, the administrators and the educators, who go that extra mile. And, and that just means so much, especially coming back from a conference like that, you know, when you see and you rub elbows with all those other educators. So just to say thank you again to everybody who, who has poured into our kids within our district. And just to know that, one, one quote that the, one of the sessions that I was in, and, and it just kind of stuck with me, and I think I've probably used it too much since I've heard it. But I, I just really believe it's true, and, but the, the quote that he said was about how if a rising tide lifts all boats, then you have to know that if we collectively have the same thing in our mind, in our hearts, for our, for our kids, then we will be able to send them anywhere, whether it's trade to a career, whether it's into industry, whether it's into higher ed, you know. So I just, just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to go to the OSBA conference. I hope that that's something that never gets cut, because you just don't know how much it helps the administrators that go, and it helps the board to learn how to be a better board. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Mr. Penneka?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I didn't realize tonight would be your valedictory.
I didn't either, until, you know.
Had we known, we could have ginned up some data. We'll call it data. Absent of data, we would ginned up something to give you a more memorable send-off. But thank you so much for your.
That's quite all right. I'm right around the corner, so don't worry.
So we can still track you down, yes. Well, thank you and good luck. I know P and G didn't ask our permission.
No, they didn't.
We could be here next December the fourteenth, so it's another story. Best wishes to you.
Thank you, and you too, sir.
I wanted to piggyback on something that you said, Dr. Johnson, about the conference. I hope each of you, during your terms on this board, have a chance to work with your organization at the state level in planning those conferences. You notice every breakout session you went to, you were asked to fill out a questionnaire, evaluation sheet. Those are very seriously studied, and so every year, the, the mix of topics, the mix of speakers is revised based upon what sort of nourishment people felt like that they got out of the given presentations. And your comment about the general session speakers. Mr. Rob Delane sweats that all year long, to find the best people that OSBA can afford on its budget, and bring them in to either inform or inspire, or mixtures of both. I'll make sure he knows that, because he, he really works hard at that for us. And finally, I wanted to make one more comment about the national television coverage of our, of our Mr. Day and Mr. Morales, and our students at the intermediate school, and give you one other side effect of that. The instrument that Mr. Day is playing, is seen playing, has a thirty-year history in this district. It was my daughter's viola when she was a student. And when she stopped doing strings work after three, four years of college, we just donated it to the orchestra program. And it's been resurrected as a TV star along with. So I, I forwarded the, the link, the clip of the NBC video to my daughter and say, look what's going on. I mean, she knows, she had Mr. Day Senior, Spanish teacher, I don't think she knows Jeremy, but knows who he is. And I was intrigued to see someone that she knew of, and to see an instrument. And so she forwarded it, my daughter lives in suburban Washington, D.C., she forwarded it to her daughter's string teacher, who has forwarded to the String Teachers Association. All across, so it's, it's gone viral. I guess every string teacher in the country now has seen Mr. Day and his comments about why he's doing that, which I find is so, so thoughtful on his part. So those are my three different comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penneka. I wanted to just say a quick congratulations to all of our students who were inducted into the National Honor Society this afternoon, and a thank you to the staff who puts on such a wonderful and professional program every time. I also wanted to thank Mr. and Mrs. Martin and Superintendent Smith for allowing me to carpool with you on our trip last Wednesday, was it? We went up to Gary, Indiana, to see the Lake Ridge School District, and how they've implemented PBL and the new tech network across their whole district. So I'm looking forward to further conversations on that here on board level. I also wanted to say a huge thanks to Madam Vice President here to my right. I don't think new board members can accomplish the things they accomplish without seasoned board member support. And I just want to thank you for everything you've done. It, it's meant a lot, and I'm sure it has to Dr. Johnson, too. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
And it's unfortunate that this is your last board meeting in front of the camera, but.
I'm not going far.
We know where you live, right? All right, let's see. I don't believe there's a Wenton Woods Teacher Association representative here, nor an OPSI.
Do you have a comment, Madam President?
Yes, Superintendent Smith.
I guess the first one is to thank Mr. Denny for all of his hard work. I'm reading something from education.ohio.gov. Important information regarding your school's emergency operations plan. Your school's emergency management plan has been found compliant after review by the Ohio Homeland Security. It will remain compliant for three years before needing to be resubmitted. I'm not sure how many people know, but Mr. Denny has put a ton of work. And I think at one point, we were the only district that had theirs in, and it was accepted. So bravo to you, sir. Thank you for everything. And then two other comments. Mr. Cleary, I know you're transitioning, sir, and you've been moving slowly through the gamut, but thank you for the words of wisdom that you always gave me. And you were always sitting to my right in my ear, asking me for the evidence. So thank you again for that. And finally, Ms. Burns, I knew you were gonna do some kind of transition trick, and here it is.
I knew you were gonna do some kind of transition trick, and here it is. But maybe we were, I know you wanted to try to do some technology live simulcast, where you were really in a virtual experience. But thank you very, very much. I could always feel the energy coming from that side of the room when we were going through some of our reports, and you were always asking the tough questions. And I know that that comes from your energy and your work at Procter, where you are always asking those, those tough questions. But I think the, the one that really captures the spirit was when you say, Superintendent, help me understand. That was always the moment. And I can feel that you pass your energy on to your colleagues, to your right and left, because they are doing it just on a regular basis now. And, Mr. Birdie, please don't capture any of those bad habits, sir. It's contagious. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith. Anything from you, Mr. Seymour?
No.
Alrighty. And there is not a need for an executive session this evening, correct? All right. Thank you all for coming. Have a very happy holiday. Meetings adjourned.